Twenty seconds away. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two. You're good.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hakeem Ashford, Director of Communications for Sedgwick County. Welcome to the Wednesday, September fifteenth, 2021 Board of County Commission meeting. This morning, Commissioners, we'll start today's meeting off with a check presentation from our county treasurer, Treasurer Linda Kazire. She's been so gracious to join us this morning with a check presentation. Treasurer, come on up.
Morning, Linda.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Many of you know that we do jeans charities and raise money for several different charities. We started this back in October of 2013 and have benefited ninety-four charities, raising almost $26,000. We've ranged from the Lord's Diner, the Ark, Union Rescue, Humane Society Honor Flights, and many, many others. But these guys have a special place in my heart, our fire district clowns. They go out and they teach children fire prevention. And we are very, very fortunate to have such a great group of clowns under the leadership of the head clown Doug, even though he doesn't dress up. But I just want to present this to you and let you know how much we appreciate everything that you guys do for Sedgwick County.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity and the support of the chief that they allow us to do this, to teach the kids fire safety. It is an honor for me to do it that. Thank you. And I can feed my pet chicken now.
Yeah, you can feed your chicken. So anyway, I'll make it short. That's all I had. But I'm just very blessed to have worked with such a great group of people that really do believe in paying it forward. And so, on that note, I say thank you again, Commissioners, and thank you for anything you guys do.
There you go. Thanks, Linda. We're gonna, we're gonna miss your leadership, Linda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Commissioners, this month is National Suicide Prevention Month. This afternoon, Comcare is launching the Zero Reasons Why campaign in partnership with local school districts to prevent teen suicide. This countywide teen-led campaign is intended to drive peer-to-peer conversations and pull the community together toward removing the stigma associated with suicide and mental wellness and opening the dialogue for real change. To learn more, we've got the website pulled up here. You can go to www zero reasons why.org. And on the website, you can find a host of information and how to also get involved. So again, www zero reasons why.org. Also, this month, Commissioners, is National Preparedness Month. National Preparedness Month is observed each September to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. The 2021 theme is to prepare to protect. Preparing for disasters is protecting everyone you love. To learn more about preparing for disasters and to make your own plan in case of an emergency, visit ready.gov/September. We've got the website pulled up for you here. And again, you can find all the information about how to create a plan for you and your family and more ways to get more information. Starting today, Commissioners, Sedgwick County residents can request a bulky waste coupon that allows them to dispose of up to 1,000 pounds of bulky waste at no cost. This coupon is good starting today, September fifteenth through November twenty-fourth. So they've got until the twenty-fourth to use that coupon. To get your coupon, visit sedgwickcounty.org/environment. All right, Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda, we've got a proclamation declaring Constitution Week, a resolution accepting the resignation of Sheriff's Civil Service Board member, a request for a letter of intent for grant application for a Calfskin Creek watershed, and a COVID-19 update from Tim Kaufman. With that, Chairman, I'll turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Hakeem, and good morning, everybody. Commissioners, welcome to the Wednesday, September fifteenth, Sedgwick County Board of Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, the first item, please.
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we were informed last night that there was no, nobody emailed, no emails on the public agenda. So we don't have to receive and file on that one. So we will go to the public agenda that we've agreed to allow people to come before, before us if they sign up at nine o'clock. And we have our first, first person to address us, George Theo Harris.
You didn't say, but I was told I have a half an hour. Is that right? I take that as a no. Is it three minutes?
You get five minutes, please.
Well, I probably won't use that. My name is George Theo Harris. I am the president of three neighborhoods, Grandview, Meadowlark, and Mead Neighborhood in southeast Wichita. An ex-president from our neighborhood who left due to retaliation threats gave my name to a family across MacArthur about loud music coming from the rodeo club. She, she knew I got things done. I told her, I help people. With that said, I'm going to be a write-in candidate for District Three. I didn't get in the primary because of complications from a knee replacement surgery. And the two leading candidates went door to door. I wasn't able to do so at that time. My knee is still swelling, but not with the pain. So, so, but I'm gonna go door to door. But anyhow, Saturday, I was at a City District One breakfast. Ms. Cruz was there. And I said how refreshing it was that she was working with the city on ideas. And I meant that. I, I think that the two should work more together. And you probably already do, but there's always room for improvement. We are not trying to shut down Club Rodeo. I've actually been there before, not to the new one. But there is some middle ground to be had. I'm well aware, as you all are, that in Kansas, in the county, there's no noise on it. Just, and it probably is not gonna start today, or I don't know that you can get it changed, nor do we need to get it changed. Like I said, there's some middle ground to be had. Just because nobody showed up to be, up to complain about them going in, didn't mean there wasn't a problem. The city might well let us borrow a decibel meter, as I was able to push them to get them calibrated in the first place. They were paperweights. They weren't even calibrated. So we have one, but it doesn't matter, because there's no noise on it. But it'll give us a frame of reference and a, and a baseline. But you guys might be able to have one. So the only other thing we could do is I partnered with Menards, and they have some rattle-resistant windows. And we might be able to, and we get 11% off, too. So we may be able to help the people if their windows are actually rattling. And if that doesn't work, then we can always just, we could just, all five of us, plus myself, we can go door to door and hand out earplugs and tell them, it really just doesn't matter. You don't matter. And I hope that's not what we get. But Chris Labrum has been, he went to the rodeo club last Friday after work, and he's trying to help resolve this. I think you guys will help resolve this. So, but there is, there is someplace to get where we can all live together happily. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, George. Any comments, questions? I don't see any. So with that, we will close the public comment, public agenda, and motion to receive and file public agenda items. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of August eighteenth, 2021.
Commissioners, we've received a copy of the, of the minutes of August eighteenth. But also, if it's okay with you all, I'd like to combine A, B, and C, which is the special meeting minutes of August twentieth and the regular minutes of August twenty-fifth. So without any objection, I'll make a moment, a motion to approve the minutes of August eighteenth, August twentieth, and August twenty-fifth. There's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item D, proclamation declaring Constitution Week.
Yes, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas September seventeenth, 2021, marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas this document is the foundation of all of our national, state, local governments, whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth to the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the rest of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third, 2021, as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all of the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to read that. I make a motion that we approve.
There's a motion and a second to approve proclamation. Other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
And today accepting us is Vicki Timmons, Chair, and Mary Draper, the chapter, Chair of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Chairman Meitzner, good morning. Honored Commissioners, my name is Vicki Timmons. And as well as being a member of a local Daughters of the American Revolution chapter, I am also the Kansas Society State Chair for Constitution Week. And it is with great pride that I accept this proclamation on behalf of the National Society, the Kansas State Society, and the local chapters Daughters of the American Revolution. All DAR members are direct lineal descendants of America's first veterans and patriots who sacrificed their lives and fortunes to help establish this great nation. Because of our heritage, we believe it is our duty to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. In 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress to set aside September seventeenth through the twenty-third annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August second, 1956, and signed by Kansas's own President Dwight Eisenhower. This year, America celebrates the 234th anniversary of the signing of this document at the Constitutional Convention on September seventeenth, 1787. Since 1956, DAR has been promoting this celebration by encouraging the study of the Constitution. Each September, DAR members across the country visit schools and libraries to talk with students. We help sponsor naturalization services for immigrants taking their oath of citizenship. And on September seventeenth, many chapters will ring bells in celebration. In short, Constitution Week is the perfect time to learn more about this important document and celebrate the freedoms it gave us. Chairman Meitzner, honored commission members, thank you so much for this proclamation.
You bet. Thank you very much. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I want to thank all of the folks from the DAR for being here today. Each and every one of the Commissioners up here have taken an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States. Some of us have taken that oath a number of times. I've had the opportunity to do it at the national level and the military, state level, and state Board of Education and local level. So it is an honor to be able to support and defend the Constitution of the United States. Also, I haven't ever told anyone this, but I wore a medal today in honor of the Daughters of the American Revolution, because a year ago, they presented a distinguished citizens award to me. And so I want to thank you all very much, as I didn't have a chance to thank you at the time. But I appreciate that, that honor and award. And I wear that in honor of each and every one of you. And my sister, my cousin, my nephew, my niece are all members of the Daughters of American Revolution. And I thank you at them for their service also. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So you kept that in hiding somewhere for a year? All right. Thanks for, thanks for wearing that. Congratulations for, on that honor. So thank you again, Daughters of the Revolution. It's always good to see you. We seem to do this once a year, and it's always a pleasure to, and a humble honor to have you join us. So thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Appointments. Item E, accept the resignation of Stephanie Jaeger from the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Civil Service Board.
Mr. Papun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papun, County Counselor. The only item we have today under appointments is to accept the resignation of Stephanie Jaeger. This is Commissioner Lopez's appointment to the Kansas, uh, the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Civil Service Board. We have received communication from Ms. Jaeger saying that she believes she had a conflict because of some work that she's been doing with some fire unions, and would appreciate being, appreciated her service, but wants to resign from this board. So we'd ask that you accept Ms. Jaeger's resignation and allow Commissioner Lopez to appoint another member to the, uh, Sedgwick County Sheriff's Civil Service Board.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez.
I make the motion that we accept the resignation of Stephanie Jaeger from the Sheriff's Civil Service Board. Thank you.
There's a motion and a second to accept the resignation. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
New business. Item F, approval of a letter of intent for grant application, Calfskin Creek watershed.
Ms. Jim Weber, how are you?
I'm good. Jim Weber, I'm the Director of Public Works. First thing I want to tell you is on this first slide, did this whole thing and never told you what a BRIC was. BRIC is an acronym for Building Resilience in Communities. We'll go back with a little bit of history, I think, before I explain this to you. But for orientation, this sort of light gray, that is the city limits of Wichita. This is maize up here, and this brownish color, this is gartered out here. This dash line pattern is Cowskin Creek, which is kind of the major river in, in the west side of the county and west Wichita. At this point, it's got like 108 square miles of drainage coming to it. These other dash patterns are, this one up here is what we call Dry Creek. It's one of the Dry Creeks. Comes back up here, crosses through. This is Northwest Y, if you're familiar with that location. Comes back around and heads back out into the county. Ignore these yellow clouds for a minute. This is the main branch of the Calfskin Creek. It starts up off of Maze Road, where it comes into the Cowskin, just north of Kellogg. It comes like, and branches off in several directions, one of them running back up here. And one of them comes down here. There are ones I've not shown because they're not really related to the project. There's one that runs out through here. So I'll go back historically, back in 1998, Halloween weekend, there was a big flood. And everybody's heard about that. And we've been dealing with that for over 20 years. And kind of the critical thing that happened or was discovered back then, and I first want to say that everything down here that I've shown is the impacted area, not everything, but newer construction was built in accordance with the floodplain maps of the time. What none of that modeling knew was that it was possible for the Dry Creek up here to actually jump across a ridge into the Calfskin Creek, North Fork of the Craftskin. And that is, in fact, what happened in the Halloween floods. And it took a while to figure it out. Some of our people, Mitch Mitchell was one of them. He was working part-time for us at the time. Our floodplain tech were actually walking, walking this area, trying to figure out how this thing happened, and actually located this spot out there. So we've known about this for over 20 years. There have been, I'd say, multiple attempts to try to get some kind of grant funding going to try to help the, the situation. And so that's a little background. So what happens is, comes down in here, this is Rainbow Lakes and through here, and back in through the Dell. Dell is over here, which is kind of impacted because of how it comes into the Cowskin. But the Dell, and there's some valley high, so older subdivisions up through here that were impacted and, and had quite a bit of flooding. So that's kind of the base of how I think the county got involved in this, as well as the city. So a little basic information about BRIC. It was first authorized in 2018. Their first year of funding was actually last year, in 2020, they had $500 million nationwide. For '21, they doubled it, and there's a billion dollars out there. Still not a lot of money for what needs to happen in the, in the country. But the nationwide competitive part of the program, there's $919 million in that. You can submit for projects. There's a cap of $50 million per project. And grants do require a 25% non-federal match. Normally, I would say local, but you know, there's always a possibility that the state could add some money to this thing. So, and we don't consider them to be local. Program priorities were really to incentivize activities that would mitigate risk to public infrastructure. They want to mitigate risk to community lifelines. So I think that would be transportation systems, utility systems, water systems, sanitary sewer systems. Those are lifelines. Emergency services definitely would be a big lifeline. And I think that's one of the things that is impacted by this problem. They're looking for things that incorporate nature-based solutions. And there is a big kind of overarching theme here of working to enhance climate resilience and, and adaptation. So for the Calfskin project, what the city has approached us with and has proposed doing is to build two dry detention locations, dams, rather. One is up on 167th Street, what we commonly call the Colwich Road, at Thirteenth Street West. And I didn't show it on the map, but it's kind of between the Colwich Road and the alignment for the Northwest Bypass. The map was getting pretty busy. The second one is down south along 135th Street West, between Pawnee and 31st Street South. And in the sort of conceptual work that the city's been doing with their consultants, they think this would remove 149 buildings from the floodplain that are in there now. And again, some of them weren't in at the time. The mapping showed they weren't in. Some of them are in now, by no fault of their own. It would eliminate street flooding at seven locations that are cutting off access to another 212 homes. And this is a transportation lifeline. And then a byproduct of this, it removes about 458 acres of raw land from the floodplain. And that could be developed in the future. I want to point out, this is very preliminary. We're just asking for an invitation to apply for a grant. So the concepts, the costs that I give you, the outcomes that we think might happen, they're going to be refined at the grant application step, and again, in the design steps. I'm going back to the map again. So Site One and Site Two are the two locations that I had mentioned for these dry detention dams. And they are very purposely big yellow clouds, because the actual shape of these things, configuration, not really known. But this is the general area that we're looking at. Total cost of the project is estimated to be $40 million. That's, wow, here's another typo. BRIC funding is 30 million. The required non-federal match is $10 million. So the city's asking that we split that with them. It'd be $5 million from the, from the county. And I'll be honest with you, we have not figured out where that money comes from yet. Grant timeline, we're on a kind of a type, tight timeline. They released the NOFO on August the ninth, Notice of Federal Funding Opportunity, August the ninth. We did have some conversations with the city back in July, because they'd seen the 2020 program, and they'd been working on this for a while. They approached us in July. This letter of intent is due to the Kansas Department of Emergency Management by October first. And so, kind of want to keep this moving. If we get an invitation to apply, the application is going to be due to KDEM again by the end of December. KDEM will have to submit that onto FEMA by the end of January. We won't know until next summer sometime how the grant application is received by them. There's an unknown contracting period to get to final award. But once they award it, we'll have 36 months to complete the project. And that puts us out in the 2025, 2026 timeframe, if this all goes well. What we're asking is you authorize the staff to submit the letter of intent and to authorize the chairman to sign. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thanks, Jim, for the presentation. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me give you a little bit of history behind what happened here in Halloween of 1998. I retired from the Air Force in 97, and my wife and I decided to build a home of our dreams that we'd been wanting our whole lives. And so we built that home in Rainbow Lakes and moved into it during the late summer of 1998. About two months later, Halloween flood came along, and my house was central, used to go right past my house before it was straightened. So the flood came up within an inch of going across Central, right next to my home. Now, a block to the east of my home, where the North Fork of the Calfskin goes through, and there's a bridge, it was about four feet above the top of the railings of that bridge. And it actually took out the blacktop of Central at that point. So if I wanted to leave my home, I couldn't go east. So you could take a look going west. 135th Street was closed both at, right there at Central. It was four or five feet of water at that point. If you tried to turn and go the other direction and go down 135th Street towards the south, the creek down there, there's a low water bridge about halfway between Maple and, and Central, and that was totally underwater. So I was actually an island. Well, if we needed any emergency, if we needed fire, EMS, didn't matter who we needed, we couldn't get them, because there was no possibility of getting anything into my entire neighborhood. It flooded all of my neighbors on the, on the east side. And then it went on down into Maple Dunes, flooded all the neighbors there, went on down into the Dell. As a matter of fact, FEMA had to come in and buy out a number of homes in the Dell, because they were destroyed, and they were in, in a floodplain that was totally unacceptable to continue folks living in that. So as a result of all that, one of the reasons I got involved in politics is that I said, we have to do something to stop this type of flooding from destroying neighborhoods, from causing all kinds of problems in that area. And so Bob Martz was starting a district advisory board. And at that point in time, I, I was appointed to his first district advisory board and started advocating for some kind of flood control measure. And the city of Wichita did start looking at it. And they determined way back in about 99 that we needed some dry detention in order to be able to resolve this. And I'm talking about 20-some years ago, that this problem exists for that long. After Councilman Martz passed away and Councilman Longwell took over, we continued to push this forward. And then after Councilman Frye got elected, we continued to push it forward. And we've been pushing this now for 20-some years. And as a matter of fact, if you take a look at the federal agenda that Sedgwick County puts together each year, one, I think, was on the front page, the first page of our federal agenda, was to try and figure out something to do with the detention between the Dry Creek and the North Fork of the Calfskin, which eventually the Dry Creek and the North Fork of the Cowskin, which eventually ends up down in the Cowskin. So it's been an issue that's been going on for an awful long time. What this does today is it doesn't obligate us to any funding whatsoever. It is a letter of intent that we need to move forward. Yesterday, the city council heard this, and they voted unanimously to pass this. So it's a joint program as we move forward. Yes, it may cost us in the future if we can get a grant. I don't know if we'll even get it. This is a letter of intent to be able to move this forward. So as I said, it's been one of our major projects. If you look at flood control throughout Sedgway County, we've got a lot of very important projects throughout the entire county. And we had a SMAB board put together some time back, and we've got, as I recall, almost a billion dollars worth of projects that need to be done in Sedgway County because flooding is not just a localized issue, it's all the way across Sedgway County. So how do we solve a billion-dollar problem? Well, we can't solve a billion-dollar problem. The only thing we can do today is start looking at pieces that we can start solving now, and this is a longstanding problem. It does take almost 500 acres out of the floodplain, which can then be developed, and we can then start having property tax on developments in there. It takes hundreds of homes out of flood control, and some of these people will be able to reduce their flood insurance or eliminate their flood insurance as a result of this project. So it has so many benefits. I know the commission is familiar with it because we've had it on our federal agenda for the last couple of years. I know it was tied to the Northwest Bypass, but right now, the Northwest Bypass is maybe 20 years away, if that. And this is a chance that maybe we can move forward sooner than that. So I just wanted to let everybody know a little bit about the history and why I've been so involved in it over that period of time, and the impact that it had on my neighbors and all of the community out in the west. So at the appropriate time, after everyone has an opportunity to speak, I'd be happy to make a motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Do have a couple of questions. This was described in the backup material as a dam. So can you please describe, is that a good adjective for this, for this infrastructure? Because again, I'll just say, from my experience, there's two ways to help flooding. Number one is to meter or control the rates of flow upstream, and then to help water flow away from you downstream quickly. And I don't know which of those two strategies this employs when they use the word "dam", it makes it sound like we're holding water back. Can you please help me?
This would be the metering version of that, and dam is, I think we're using the word "dam" because the way, when it's full, it'll look like a dam with a reservoir behind it. It falls into a category of structures that the state Division of Agriculture is going to consider to be a high-hazard dam. Doesn't mean it's dangerous, just means you have to really design it right. So I think that for all but the most extreme flows, I mean, again, design's not done, this is a conceptual thing. Some of this will look probably more to you like a levee than a high dam as it kind of matches back into the surrounding terrain. But it would definitely be an earth embankment-type structure with some, kind of like where the Arkansas River comes out of the big ditch up north of Wichita, right? We've got Fox culverts that set up the metering of how much water can come out. And in that case, everything bypasses. In this case, it would just be impounded in the dam. There's two of them.
So when we have a rain event or a flood event, and water's being held back by this levee for a time, so it was more like a retention pond in that regard, are there structures in that area that would be potentially in that area where that water would be held back? Is there any structures there that would?
I think the intent of the project would be to buy the properties and structures that might be in it, A, miss as many as you can, but to buy whatever's there so that it's not a problem.
We don't have an idea how many that would be right now?
I don't at this point.
Will we have to use eminent domain to do that?
Potentially.
Okay. And then this property, once it's been pulled out of the floodplain, and it could be developed, do we know who's going to benefit from that in terms of the developers? Is there any benefit other than tax value in the future? Is there any payback to the county or any type of, you know, someone's going to make money off that development? I'm just curious, is there going to be some type of effort to recoup some of this money back to the county?
I don't know what's possible at this point. There's not a conversation about how to do that. It's really, it's chasing a grant to try to get $30 million from the federal government to go out and make this improvement. And there will be details that are going to have to be worked out.
Do we know who did the study on this to develop this idea?
I think the blast work has been done by Wood PLC, it used to be AMEC. AMEC, I guess, just so you know, as we, in 2008, we had to do the levy certifications. AMEC did the levy certifications, then that was followed by newer floodplain mapping. AMEC did the floodplain mapping. City's been working with AMEC on this. They have, I mean, it's not like they're the only ones to get to the data, but they developed all of it. So they're very nimble in the flood modeling that needs to be done. So they've modeled several different things, and again, that's why we're using clouds. I don't know exactly what this looks like, and it's a little bit of a race to get there. But between now and December, it would be, I anticipate it'd be further developed and more detail available. It's still not going to be a design because the design itself would be a major part of the project, major function, so.
So a letter of intent, it sounds to me like it's essentially a commitment that it should be received, this grant, that we're committing to the local match, or the local funds to make this happen. The 25% is committed essentially by the governing bodies of Wichita and Sedgway County. We're committing, if you will, 25% of the funds, although we don't have a contract, we don't know the details, but we are essentially making a commitment to that 25%. Was that a fair way?
So I don't really like the term that they choose to use, which is "letter of intent", because that's not what it is. It's saying, "We're intending to apply a grant, apply for a grant," basically asking the question, "Will you accept it and process it if we go to the trouble of doing one?" So the information that's been provided is very, it's trying to, I think, help them determine whether or not it's going to meet the criteria of the program, whether it's something that they think that could go forward. And I think, and essentially, it saves both of us a lot of trouble. If they say, "This is a no-go from the beginning, don't spend your money trying to put together", then we stop. But it is, I guess the intent part is that we are saying, if given the opportunity, we intend to apply for the actual grant. But I think, as Commissioner Dennis pointed out, that's still not a commitment. We've applied for the grant, and if we get down the road six months or eight months and it doesn't look good, we don't finish it up. Somebody else gets the money. I think that's an open question, right up to the minute you actually, you could get pre-selected for award and still not sign the grant application if the thing doesn't look right. It's just, I don't like the words they're using, but that's their choice, not mine.
Do we know, my memory, I remember the Halloween floods of 1998, and I'm trying to remember exactly where the biggest problems were, but I thought a lot of that flooding was along the Cowskin Creek. I'm sure the Cowskin also had some challenges, but do we not have the biggest problems on the Cowskin Creek at that time?
Well, we had them everywhere. I mean, the Cowskin, if you go out by Colwich, there were drowned cattle hanging in the trees on the Cowskin. So it was a big deal. I think that this is, this is picking a place where some effect can be had. The Cowskin, with over 100 square miles coming in, you can't really deal with it very well, you have to deal with the tributaries. So what, if I was doing a long-term plan, there'd be these detention dams here, there might be some other ones out around Colwich and Andale, we'd be picking these off out in the far reaches of the basin trying to cut the flow. This one has, I guess I should point out that this requires a cost-benefit analysis. It's got to make the grade that way, same way we would do an economic development project. And so you have to also pick projects for grants that can make the grade and show the benefits. This one with so many structures in the floodplain that could benefit is going to do well on that part of it. That doesn't get you the grant, but it's another sort of tripwire. You have to get over the CBA to get in the door to get the grant application done.
Do we know, do we know that when these, and I'm thinking about a couple of other flood events we'll talk about in just a moment, but these 149 buildings in the floodplain, again, I assume that they all flooded in 1998, and you said some buildings are inaccessible due to flooding, 212 homes there. Primarily, it's 149 homes, I assume that actually probably had flood damage that we're mostly concerned about, and this would take, I don't know if there's others that would benefit from this, but these 149 homes or buildings would benefit from this. Do we know what the age of those buildings were? Did they know they were in a floodplain when they were constructed? I mean, what's the background of these buildings? Do we know, is this something that happened because future, or say, later development caused these because of hard surface runoff that has caused a flooding issue? Has anybody ever looked at those types of parts of this? I mean, I'm just, we have these problems all across the counties, is what I'm wondering. And again, so when people build on floodplain, they make maybe a bad choice, but I'm just curious what the stories behind these. How are these?
Well, they hit the whole range of things that you've talked about. If you go to the Dell, that's a subdivision, goes back to early '50s, there was no flood mapping. And so every, not every, almost every home in the Dell was built too low because they just had, you know, what's the history I could get from the farmer, I guess, as far as what does the Cowskin do out there? As you, there's some development on the west side of Mays Road that's kind of in the same boat. Then there is, again, this whole group. We had effective flood maps in the, I think the first official ones were in '86, and there were some preliminaries before that, which weren't very well. We fought with FEMA for over a decade about what those first set of maps should look like. And so there are homes that would have been built before 1998. We had effective maps, maps that showed they should be okay, but the modeling didn't know about this inter-basin transfer, this jump that we had from one creek to the other. And so they inadvertently ended up in the floodplain, ended up flooding. It was probably quite a shock to them, as I think it was to Commissioner Dennis to find it right outside his door. And so we have that category of things. I doubt that anything has been built in the floodplain out there since. The better maps are available that's in the floodplain, but that would be just an error that got made. I mean, I think for this, sitting county are running off of essentially the same kind of floodplain management program, and they have a different amount of freeboard or use to than we do. We have two-foot of freeboard we put on everybody, but there, has anybody researched all that? I don't know. Somebody may have the list. They're probably damageless from the beginning, but it's, in a sense, it's where we are today. That is the thing that exists out there.
And if a home floods multiple times, there's an option sometimes that the FEMA will offer a buyout on that property. Is that still out there?
So that's a mitigation program that you would also have to apply for. Some local government would have to decide they were going to do a buyout. Those are good programs, but it's voluntary. You can't take their home. They have to, I mean, I think, again, Commissioner Dennis pointed out, I can show you lots right on 119th Street where three sides of a house got bought out, and the guy in the middle's still sitting there for what are reasons I can't figure out. So that's an option. We haven't run that kind of program for a while. The other downside to it is that it has to remain in government ownership forever, and you can't convert it to, you can't say, "Well, let's sell it to a guy who's going to build it high enough, it's not going to..." You can't do that. You've just got, and the county has, I don't remember the number, dozens of properties like that around that are a little bit of a hassle with maintenance and how to take care of them. So it's not, it's not the end-all, but it does get people out of the problem.
Did we know about the BRIC grant before the city gave us information about their effort to get this grant or apply for this grant? Is that the first we knew about this BRIC?
That's the first I knew about it. Now, I would just say, I don't know. We did get, kind of after we were talking to the city, we did get notice from Julie over in Emergency Management that it was available. They communicate directly with Emergency Management, they put it out to everybody. They may have put something out in 2020, but that wasn't a real good time for Emergency Management, as I know you know, right? So we could have missed it a year ago. City happens to be working with consultant on problems in this area since 2019 again, so I think consultant probably brought it forward to them, said, "Here's a place to go." They brought it to us, and we started.
So let me just make a couple of comments, and I'll be done talking. So I would say, since I've been a commissioner, I don't know how many times it's flooded out west, maybe more than I'm aware of, I suppose that's possible. Obviously, '98 floods was, that was a very, very bad flood for West Wichita. And since I've been a commissioner, we actually had three historic floods in 2016 that impacted primarily Derby and Mulvane. We've had water problems in Districts 2 and Districts 5, huge problems. And there's apparently been no support, no money to address these from any municipality. So we're continuing to be challenged. In fact, I'll tell you, the Derby had historic, enormous property damages to the city of Derby in both 1993, 1995, and 2016. 2016, we had two 100-year floods and a 500-year flood back-to-back, the last one being August the 16th. That also had significant damage to the city of Mulvane. Now, a lot of those homes were built, I think, before the floodplain maps were understood. But here we are, and there seems to be no easy solution to any of that. Now that we know there's a BRIC grant option out there, I guess I would like to ask for support from the manager and from Director Weber and my colleagues. If we're going to do this today, we need to make sure that we do this again in 2022. Let's ask the city of Mulvane and the city of Hayesville and the city of Derby to partner with the county. Let's put together some proposals to fix some problems down south. Because that's where the real problems, in my opinion, I've seen in the county since I've been a commissioner. There's been maybe flooding problems elsewhere, but that's, those are the areas that really stand out to me as being significant since I've been a commissioner. So I think for us to commit $5 million to this, we don't know where the money's going to come from. It's pretty good likelihood, I think, we'll get this grant. We need to find $5 million. $5 million by itself would do huge things to help out the city of Derby. So if we didn't get the grant, if we could put $5 million towards some of the problems down there, we would solve some big problems. We've actually had structures fall into the creek this last year. We've had to close a road a couple of years ago because it was so dangerous, we weren't able to fix that. The cost to fix the road would be about $750,000, but we chose to close the road instead. And now the public can't get around the way they have for decades. So there's problems down south, and I would like to say, if we're going to do this today, I'll support this, but I would like to make sure that we don't forget this opportunity, and we need to be equally committed to doing some things down south. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. So this problem is a lot different than the problems that we see in District 2, just because we have groundwater issues. Does a grant like this, would that cover the same kind of problems, or is this specific to more of a problem like this?
I think it's, again, we can dig deeper into it going forward, and I appreciate what Commissioner Howell is saying. I mean, we're not selecting this particular project because it's the only one we care about, it's just the one that showed up at the front door. Now, I think we've talked about before the fact that for flood insurance and FEMA's normal programming, they don't see groundwater flooding as flooding. But we're certainly willing to dig into the NOFO deeper and try to figure those things out. We don't really know how far this stretches. This is year two. The city has spent some time looking at grants that were awarded in 2020 to try to get some, like kind of puzzle out what it is they're doing. It's a lot like the process we went through with the infra and build grants up on the North Junction. You kind of start in, and you learn as you go, and get a debrief from the grant people and the federal agencies when the time comes to find out what, you know, what could you improve, what's different. I would love to tell you that's a possibility. I'm not optimistic that groundwater flooding is a place where we can attack with this money.
It doesn't seem like anybody, I don't know, the groundwater thing is, I mean, I know we've had that conversation, but it's so frustrating because it gets left out of so many things, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I would be remiss not to mention the flooding issues we have in Valley Center. We have been working on those for quite a while. There are community members up there that feel like we're not doing it fast enough. And so, I mean, there are a lot of flooding issues around the entire county, it's not just one or the other. And so I guess when you say this is the one that came to the doorstep, what about the ones that have been on the doorstep for a while in regards to north flooding issues? And I know that you have been working on it, so this isn't me, like, calling you out like you're not doing your job, because you have been very diligent with the entire staff. So I just, I guess I just want to mention it, since we are talking flooding, we do have flooding issues in Valley Center and up north, and maybe if you could just mention for a second exactly how we are paying attention to the entire county and not just projects like this.
We are paying attention to the entire county and not just projects like this. So I mean, we have stuff, you know, we are aware of, I- So I mean, we have stuff, you know, we are aware of, I hate to say it, but the biggest pain in my entire career is drainage, right? That's kind of like all it seems like I ever get to do. And so we are working, continue to have a dialogue up in Valley Center with, with Brent Clark and their staff, property owners up there trying to get, get to solutions. You know, it's tough, because Commissioner Howell had mentioned the SMAB, and Dennis have commissioned a SMAB board, and it was trying to get to a regional solution to drainage. And we spent nearly 20 years trying to plow through how to get there and how to get a regional funding source, a dedicated funding source that, for example, could have been suggested a 10th of a cent sales tax or a small dedicated mill levy that would set up a funding stream that could be administered by probably the county, that could be used in not just, you know, any community in the county to get these things done, that in this case could have generated the funding for the $5 million match, or whatever we would need to do. Maybe it's 100%. Well, it was intended to get matching funding from the communities that we're working in, but you know, but we don't have that. And so we're kind of dealing with this in a really kind of ad hoc way. I know that Julie had sent the information about the BRIC grant to all the communities in the county. We did get some contacted by Hayesville about, you know, is this something we could use on D-21? And again, it's got to fit all these criteria. It's just one, it's a program that showed up at the front door with a specific project that had some good research and work done, made it ready to go. We're committed to work on drainage everywhere, and we do it every day. And we will. We already have reached out to Derby to see if we can sit down and talk to them, maybe after the 1st of October, when things cool down a little bit, about projects in Derby, because Commissioner Howell did point out yesterday that one of the things this SMAB did was, there were two drainage studies that came out of it. One was Spring Creek and Derby, which he did point out to me yesterday. He's got it with him. And the other one was on the Chisholm Creek up through Valley Center, which was something we kind of referred to when that TIF district was coming through, and they're trying to do drainage out in the middle of a piece of flood control, and they're going to make a major investment there, which is exactly out of that book, and we won't pay a dime for it. I mean, you had to give up the TIF, right? But in terms of, there's no cash going into that. So we're always trying to leverage everything to do what we can to fix it, because it just doesn't go away. There's a rainfall around the corner that may be a little bigger than the last one. It's going to cause a problem. We'd like to knock them off if we can.
So what would be the action step to having a preliminary discussion or reviving a discussion that was in the past around a regional water plan? Because, you know, we have, water is our, one of our most precious resources, and so how are we managing it as a region? And how do we start that conversation or revive the conversation around that initiative?
So the, the group still stands. All their work still stands. They were stalemated with the funding source. And so I, I think honestly it would require a good conversation, the biggest partner in it's the city of Wichita, and it needs a conversation between the city and the county about would there be a, willing to partner and coming up with, taking the lead and coming up with a fund, a dedicated funding source. We have, through this set of tools we have, Commissioner Howell mentioned the billion dollars with the project, that's how we kind of prioritize these things and decide where to go first. So we have all the tools there, but what we don't have, what we have always been stuck on is where does the money come from? And you can't really get people to participate or partner or play, play with you if you don't have money to play with. And so that's, I wouldn't be anxious to start up any of the work of the SMAB unless there was this kind of real good dialogue between the city council and the county commission about, are you willing to do something with funding and get it going?
Well, and perhaps with the passage of their new sustainability board, this could be a topic that they tackle. You know, we, we talk about all of our resources in a way that are we utilizing them as best we can when we talk about, I'm going to use the word, climate change. It's important that we pay attention to all those factors and how, you know, what are we doing as a community to ensure we're being diligent about planning in all aspects, whether it be water or building or anything? So I guess I'd like to see something around having or opening up that dialogue to, to start the conversation. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just, we call it the SMAB, the Storm Water Management Advisory Board, is that the right acronym?
That's right.
And they are inactive once again. We activated them a couple of years ago after we had some flooding in Sedgwick County, and there was, I think, great discussion. They moved that ball down that field quite a ways, but then they stopped. We stopped because there was, it was obvious there was not a will of the commission to fund anything. So we, it was the point of meeting and having all this discussion that there's never going to be any money to do anything. So SMAB is now back to inactive status again, and so this is one of those topics. Every time it floods, we, we activate, we get all excited, we talk a lot, and then we don't do anything, and then it kind of goes away. This is, this is, this is the roller coaster of this political topic, unfortunately. And I'm exasperated. I'm sure there's people out there that are also exasperated. I think the best time to solve flooding problems is when it's not flooding. This is the best time to have that conversation. But the last time we talked, as you said, we talked about different revenue streams, and there was just no will of the commission to do anything. There are, there are staff meetings where this was discussed at length and didn't go anywhere. I do want to point out that the county spent $175,000 in 2014, actually, they got the report in 2014. I believe this report was made in 2013, before I was here. Thanks to that commission, it cost Sedgwick County, I believe, about $175,000 to develop this study. It's a fairly thick book, as you can see, lots of information in here. They outlined 47 flood management projects in the south part of the county. Those, those projects are $30 million if you were to do them all back in 2014. And the stream improvement projects, there's 100 projects listed here, total of $156 million. So we spent $175,000 to do this, and then we dropped it. So again, that's frustrating. Thank you.
I would just say, just so you'll know, it's not been dropped, because in fact, the city of Derby tells us they've implemented a number of things that are in that report. It gives a good sort of schematic of what it is you should do, and then it is something where you can pick off projects as you go that makes sense.
Thank you. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I agree with everything all the commissioners have said so far. We've got a countywide problem, and we've recognized we've had a countywide problem for a long time. Before, the majority of the commission was on this. Commission, I think only Commissioner Howell and I probably watched the briefing. We brought Johnson County down, and they gave us a very nice briefing out at WSU Tech on what they do to solve stormwater problems. And the way that they do it is they've got a 10th of a cent sales tax countywide that they put into a pot. If a community needs some kind of a problem solved because of flooding, there is a match. They take out of that pot, the community pays part of it, the pot pays part of that, and they're able to move forward. There was not a majority of the commission at that time that wanted that, and I know that the city of Wichita objected to it, because they would be the majority of the people that would pay for that, and they wanted to control it on their own at that point in time. Now, a lot of the people over at the city have changed out, the people here at the county have changed out. And maybe it's time for us to go back and, and take a look again at what Johnson County did and see if we wanted to do something similar. I don't think most people would notice a 10th of a cent sales tax when they got ready to go purchase something, especially those that are taking a look at, at what happens when their home floods. This is a countywide issue. I admit that 100%. We've got a billion dollars worth of problems out here. This is one step, and I hope the commission agrees with me. This is, is an opportunity that we may have. We don't even know. This is just a letter of intent for us to be moved forward. So I certainly hope that, that we look at this as, as a countywide issue. The things that I do, I try not to be parochial on anything. I want to make sure that I look at a county, I am invested in this, and I've admitted that from the beginning, that I would love to see something like this happen. So I see there's one more comment, but if, after that, I'd be loved to make an emulsion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I would love to, is that recorded when Johnson County came? I would love to watch that. I don't know if we could find that, if I could get help finding that. I would like to watch that and just see what they were saying. But is that something that we would have to get the state permission on to if we went down that path?
So I'm not your lawyer, but I can tell you a little bit of history. They, at the time that Johnson County did that, they knew they had a problem, and they were working with the legislature. The legislature set up a window of time, a year or two, whatever. There was a window of time at which a county, I think they had to hold an election, but they could establish this, a sales tax up to a 10th of a cent. Johnson County was the only one to do it. I can't tell if we even knew about it, or if would have done it if we would have known about it. Window closed, and so that's not an option that's available right now, I think, without going back to the legislature again to, to get something. That's my legal version.
Well, because I know that there are a few cases, or a few things that we could implement without having to change or have the state approve it, but I wasn't sure if this was one of those, or, I guess, Mike, that would be a question for you.
Commissioner Lopez, I have looked at the sales tax issue briefly. I think it would take special legislation to do what Johnson County's done, and we could obviously go to the legislature this section, session and get that kind of authority. I mean, we have other sales tax authority by statute that we haven't used yet, more in the area of community mental health and community health, but not, not in this area. So, and we've already used our limit of 1% for the ad valorem, sales tax reduction in road and bridges that we've had in place for many years. So it would take special legislation.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Just a follow-up comment to Commissioner Lopez. One thing is different in Johnson County, which I think is very interesting, is they don't do stream maintenance in Johnson County. That's completely handled in the private sector, civil lawsuits go to the courts, and they, they battle it out in courts and figure out who's going to pay what. But there's no stream maintenance happening in Johnson County, if I understand correctly. The, all of the revenue is for things like bridge improvements, things like that, to make the water flow better, possibly retention, retention ponds that would help, you know, meter the water, but there's, it's all about water flows across the county, but, but they don't deal with stream maintenance like we do here in Sedgwick County. So we've spent a lot, we spare, we spent a fair amount of money in Sedgwick County doing stream maintenance, and I think that's, that's one way to do it, and I appreciate what we do, and I think they do a great job. But there's a significant difference in what Johnson County does and what Sedgwick County does. And I believe that was back in 1985 when they passed that, that sales tax, and they put out like 30, I'm going to say 30 or 40 million dollars worth of improvements over that time, I believe, maybe more, maybe way higher than that.
It's pretty significant.
It's a big number.
And Johnson is a little different. Johnson is a, got sort of a lot of equally sized communities, 100,000 people communities, but the thing that works well for them and kind of where we probably need to go is that they're coordinating, so it doesn't just, we got to the city limits and we stopped. It's, no, this project needs to go on through the next city. And so they're able to get people partnering, again, when you have the money, it's like this grant, we'll chase this grant because somebody has the money. Well, if, if in Johnson County's case, they are holding the money that they need to do the projects, people will do things to make it happen. And it's a, it's sort of the carrot thing. It's very powerful.
One of my concerns, of course, is that a lot of the small, some of the, some of the cities in Sedgwick County do levy, if you will, a fee on their water bills or whatever for stream maintenance within their cities. And I think Wichita does something, and I know Derby does something, I think other cities do as well. I don't want to offset that. I would like to add revenue to the problem rather than switching how that revenue is collected. So there's a concern that I would have that they would potentially back out of their, their other efforts to, to solve these problems and simply fall back on the county.
So I just did a quick Google search of Johnson County square miles and Sedgwick County square miles. And Johnson County encompasses 480 square miles, but Sedgwick County encompasses how many?
Oh, God, I was afraid you'd ask me.
1,009 square miles. So we are a little bit different in this, in the landmass that we encompass, and so we have potentially, since we have double the square miles, we could have double the water issues. So I think it's important for us to understand that even though we do look to Johnson County a lot of times, we are vastly different in geography and population. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the conversation, and hopefully it spurs some action towards the future as we move forward. Right now, we have one opportunity that we need to take some action on, so I'd like to make a motion that we authorize staff to submit a letter of intent and authorize Chairman to sign. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that. Second, any other comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, COVID-19 update.
Hello, Tim. Commissioner Tim Coffin, Deputy County Manager. Going to take a few minutes today to talk about where we're at right now with COVID-19. If you could pull up the.
Dashboard.
Dashboard, that's the word I'm looking for. Thank you.
Read your mind.
I thought we'd take a few minutes. I'll highlight a couple of things on the dashboard, and then I've got some data to report to you as well.
Sorry. Do you want this one or the full one? Okay.
What's wrong with Firefox?
Just going to call them.
As you can see, we continue to be over 9% in our rolling positive rate, and the numbers, the raw numbers are, again, continuing to match what we saw most recently back in January. And so the, we had a lot of concerns over the end of the year, end of January and February, things started to tail off, and then they leveled off, and now they've increased pretty significantly, and they've kind of settled in at that rate. And so that is concerning for us as well. In terms of hospitalization, we're seeing something very similar. The hospital number is 206, most recently, the highest number in the ER that we've, ICU that we've seen in quite a while. And again, those numbers compare back to late December, early January, and so concerns there as well. We continue to show where cases are, and they're across the community. We're doing great on supplies now. Again, the parallels that we see between date of onset now compare again to what we were seeing earlier in the first part of the year. I think the thing that may be most interesting on this particular tab of the dashboard is if you look at the zero to nine age in confirmed cases, and the, and the next bar is 10 to 17, that represents almost 15% of all the confirmed cases that we have seen since the beginning of the pandemic. And so that, those numbers are continuing to increase quite rapidly, and so we're seeing concern there. Point out that most of those folks aren't eligible for a vaccine, and we know for sure that the vaccine is the best tool that we have to help protect people from disease and to slow the spread. So again, we'll continue to encourage folks to get vaccine. Again, lots of information on the dashboard. Any questions about what we're seeing on the dashboard right now?
Commissioner Cruz.
Tim, thank you. Not really so much a question. I just have been receiving some requests from the community. We have seen other, other.
our hospitals right now are from Sedgwick County. So, I think it's important to note, I've heard some stories around the community of folks who have had emergencies, not related to COVID, go into our emergency rooms, and they're being turned away. So, that's children with other respiratory needs, other, other needs, people with gallbladders, people with heart attacks, people who have other medical conditions, aren't being able to be seen because the hospitals are encompassed with one diagnosis. So, I hope to have this graphic soon. Do you know, Tom, when we might be able to display that in a way that our community can see?
Yeah, Commissioner, I think Jack will have it up by end of week.
Okay. And so, just for clarity's sake, with those three facilities who gave us the percentage of, how do we plan to take all of this data and put it into one number when we had three different numbers from those hospitals? Can you explain that?
Yeah, and first of all, the dashboard, hospital numbers always represent only Via Christie and Wesley. They do not represent the VA. We kept that dashboard to the public hospitals, the general hospitals. The ways we are looking at displaying that would be a pie chart or a graph, and you would combine the Wesley Via Christie numbers together and show one number. So, as you mentioned, this past Monday, one was at 88%, one was at 94%, you would add those numbers together and show graphically, totally within the community, what percentage of hospitalized people have received vaccinations versus those who have not received vaccinations. We'll, we'll display that through a chart.
Okay. And I think what we know from what we see nationally and what we've seen historically over time, the last number of weeks and months, is that that number's going to be somewhere around 90%, and it does have a real impact on hospital operations, and as you mentioned, a number of, a number of hours every week, hospitals are on diversion, so they're not taking patients from outside of the area, and we see stories from across the country where people look for placements for hospital patients, and sometimes they're placing them hundreds and hundreds of miles away, so it is a significant concern.
Okay, and one last question around testing sites. I had a community member mention that our testing location indicator might need some updating, I, and I wonder, can we go to that page?
I'm going to let Cole do that.
Seems like we're going back to the very first discussion we had around testing last year, it was a big, big deal, and now it's sort of come back in full force, and I want to make sure the community is aware of all locations where they can receive a test, considering we have a lot of folks who are needing to quarantine, we need to get, make sure kids are back in school, parents are at work, those kinds of things. Can't really see it. There is a map indicator, too, you can place, we can, can you show the map? That's what I've been kind of giving out to folks.
This is a really good, detailed level of information it provides. It tells you who may have a fee and who doesn't have a fee. I'm trying to find the map again. Go Get Tested Kansas is another good map. KDHE has a map. The maps are really pretty hard to keep up, but we're trying to make sure that static data is updated at least once a week.
Yeah, this is kind of what I was talking about, this. It's a nice way to find a place that's close to you. The other thing is, I had a gentleman call me about his test results, he wasn't able to, he didn't have access to the internet, and he was given a, given those instructions to go online to find, so I want to thank your staff for getting that gentleman his test results relatively quickly, but I wonder, are we able to upfront tell folks if they don't have access to the internet, or if they don't have access to get it online or via text, or whatever the case may be, that they can call a number, and maybe that is being told to them upfront? Okay, okay, I understand sometimes.
That is the solution for that very, very small percentage of people. We want to make sure that we're able to get results to everyone, and so for that very, very, the system is automated, set up so that 99 and 1/2% of the population is going to receive that either directly through a text message, or they can go look it up in a portal, but for that very small percentage of people that can't do that, they can call that 1022 number, and we'll take their information and get back with them.
Okay, and since we're on testing, real quick, later in your slides, are you going, you're doing a lot of mobile outreach this week, which, that's an incredible way to help people who don't have transportation services, are you going to hit that? Okay, okay, thank you, Tim.
Sure. So, we'll move through some other numbers, and then if there's more questions, we may need to go back to the website as well. But last week, at our vaccination sites and clinics, we vaccinated 700, we gave 761 total doses, 244 of those were first doses, and 397 plus 83, so 480 people considered fully vaccinated because they got that single dose or their second dose. So, cumulatively, the Health Department has helped 116,901 individuals get to that fully vaccinated status through the second dose or the single dose, Johnson &amp; Johnson, and we've also given 237,000 doses, so shout out to the Health Department staff, because they're doing a tremendous amount of work. Initially, we saw most of those vaccines happening through our 223 South Main Clinic. Now, we're seeing a large number of folks who are getting the vaccine, where it's more convenient for them through a mobile clinic or a partner clinic, or an event clinic. In terms of the community's vaccination status, if you look at the eligible population, or folks 12 and older, 55 and 1/2% have now received their first dose, and 50.2% are considered fully vaccinated. Amongst our full population, first dose number is 46.2%, and fully vaccinated, right around 42%.
Commissioner Cruz?
Tim, can you remind us again what our goal would be, or what, what is the term I'm looking for?
The, I think the herd immunity discussion that we've talked about is somewhere between 80 and 90%. I think if we could get, given the numbers that we have now, if we could get to 70%, we should feel pretty good, but we've got a lot of work left to do, so we'll continue to offer vaccines in a lot of different ways. As I said, we are continuing to offer vaccinations in 223 South Main, at our main clinic, that's Wednesday through Saturday, and since January, we have done 124 mobile clinics, 148 partner clinics, and 18 event clinics, and as you mentioned, we've got lots of clinics going on every week, all across the community, and, and we're working with a lot of different partners to make that happen. And I would remind the community that we're certainly not the only vaccine provider in the community. Most of the pharmacies in town have a vaccination program, and they're available for vaccinations as well. And if people need information, we've got that clinic locator that we talked about. In terms of our testing experience right now, we are offering testing at Sunflower Shelter at Sedgwick County Park. We are doing that five days a week. On Wednesdays, we do that through 6 o'clock. Now, we're sampling between 300 and 400 persons a day. I looked at an earlier presentation that I did a few, probably six or eight weeks ago, it was 50 or 60 people a day. What we've seen since the end of June, when things were probably at the lowest point in terms of our infection rate, we've seen a 600% increase in the last 11 weeks in terms of testing demand, and so that has created some challenges for the current environment we're working at, and we do have results available next day for folks, and of the folks that we sampled, almost 1,700 folks last week, 21% of those results came back as positive. If you choose to get a test with us, if you'll go to the QLIS text SC COVID test, to that number right there, that will get you in line and help meter the flow of people through the Sunflower Shelter. We know that right now, because of the infection rate, as the infection rate goes up, the exposure rate goes up, so the demand for testing goes up, and so we are in the process of trying to identify a new, larger space for testing. We had facilities and Health Department staff out yesterday, they visited four different sites, I think they've selected one, we're working now in the process of getting a lease together so that we can move that function, we'll do that as quickly as we possibly can. But until we can, if people would use that QLIS line to help meter folks through, it's good for them, and it's good for our staff as well. As we look forward, the concerns that we have continue to be related to the increasing positivity rate and the number of cases. The other thing that has popped up in the last few weeks, particularly on our hospital calls, is the increasing number of pediatric cases, and so, again, children can't be vaccinated right now, so it's really important for adults that are around children to be vaccinated, because that's probably going to extend a little bit of protection to those kids, so I would again encourage anyone who has kids that hasn't been vaccinated, please work with either us or another vaccine provider to get that vaccine taken care of. We've talked about the vaccination rate, we're still quite a ways from that herd immunity number that we're looking for. We will continue to offer vaccine access through mobile partner and event clinics in addition to that fixed site, and we're also in the process now of planning for vaccine for ages 5 through 11. We think that there will be an approval for that sometime this fall, and there's also been talk in the last few days about a mandate for large employers to make sure that their workforce is vaccinated, so we're planning for what we anticipate to be an increase in demand for vaccine on us and other providers.
Commissioner Cruz?
Can you clarify, I feel like that's going to be a hot-button word, can you clarify which kind of mandate and who is mandating that?
I'm certainly not, I'm not mandating anything. The President announced last week that he had expectations of any employer that had over 100 employees, that their workforce be vaccinated, and he also made a similar mandate on healthcare providers that receive Medicare, Medicaid funding, and so we know that there are a number of folks in that industry that are not vaccinated, and so we'd like to be able to help them achieve that vaccination, but no, that is not a county mandate.
Thank you for the clarification.
One other thing that I wanted to mention today is that, one of the things that we're working on is trying to help allay some of the concerns or fears that people may have about getting the vaccination, so we've adopted what we call the Ambassador Program, it's based on a federal program called their Community Corps, and really what it gets down to is it is a specific training to help volunteers, community volunteers, talk to their neighbors and their friends about COVID-19, and so if, if you are, if your work group, if your friend group, there are unvaccinated folks and they don't know who to turn to, we'd like to train you to be able to share some good, positive information with folks, and you can do that by either emailing Cedric County Health, SCDAmbassador@cedric.gov, or calling that 1022 line and leaving a message and getting signed up for the training. And again, there's always lots of information on our website, we've got the dashboard, we've got story maps, there's lots of information available. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for the summary, Tim, and the current update. Any questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, and just a constituent just contacted me through a text and asked me if I would be willing to ask you this question. Do you know, the McConnell population, McConnell Air Force Base population is included in the Sedgwick County population, I assume? I'm pretty sure that's true, but what about the vaccine rates at the base? Are they also included in our, in our 50-point, 50% calculation?
I'll have to verify whether or not they are. Early on, we did not get information from the feds, and we may still not get that. McConnell's been a little bit, they're dealing with defense issues, and they try and keep some of that information close, and so I don't know if that number...
Well, there's two ways to handle that, I guess we could subtract the population from our calculation if you don't have the data, that would be one way to do that, or, again, you can't add the population but not add, not add the vaccine data, you have to do both, either add them both or not add either one, that would be two ways to do that, so, in either case, I'd just appreciate a follow-up on that, let me know one way or the other.
I'll ask our data branch to look at that and see.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Out of all the positive cases that we're seeing, do we have an idea, percentage-wise, how many are pediatric patients?
I don't have that information with me. What, when I looked at the data this morning that's on the dashboard, the, the 0 to 10 population was around 4.75% of all positives, but that's historic.
Okay, historically, could we start seeing, or just tracking, almost weekly or whatever would be easiest, the percentage of children, so we can see if that's changing over the next few weeks, or really what that looks like since schools are back? I know a lot of schools are starting to mask, but it would be interesting to be able to watch that trend. What's the wait time right now for testing at the Sedgwick County Park?
It really depends on the point in time that you approach them, but generally, earliest in the day, you're going to get there, you may be able to get through there within 45 minutes, 15, 20 minutes, 45 minutes. The longest waits that we've seen so far are three hours, but that was before we had effectively started using QLIS. Right now, people don't have to wait, because the QLIS system will kind of let them know where they're at in line.
Okay, that's good. And I know we've kind of discussed this before, and there was an issue with staffing, but is it possible that we could start expanding testing to the weekends, because that's not widely offered right now? I know WSU lab has, Saturday mornings are available, but, I mean, that's pretty far south for a lot of people, so I wasn't sure if that's something that we could start offering as well on Saturdays?
We continue to struggle with staffing. If we get caught up on our staffing, we'll certainly consider adding some weekend hours as well.
Okay, and then just my last question, if we do a vaccine clinic in the community, and we do the first round, for the second round, we have enough vaccine, right, where it's not going to be an issue getting enough vaccines for people to have their second dose?
We don't have any concerns about vaccine availability right now.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. I've received a couple of questions from the community, I'm just going to forward those to you, and you can try and answer those, rather than taking time today during the meeting, so just expect some questions. The other thing is, on testing, I've received a couple of emails, several of them actually, about our testing facility over at Sunflower Clinic. I forwarded all those to Tom and to Tim, so they're, they're aware of these, and I sincerely appreciate that you've got in the briefing today that we're looking for a larger facility as a result of some of the concerns that I had seen on our testing facility. I actually went over and toured it before I came to work Monday morning, and the folks over there are doing a great job. I want to make sure that I let you know, and all those, I appreciate what they're doing, they're kind of operating with one hand tied behind the back, though, because we've got a table setting out 25 yards or so from the building, out in the sun, or if it's raining, out in the rain, and the public gathers in the parking lot, it's, it's not ideal, so I do appreciate that you're looking for a larger facility, because I think that's important, that we have that. The final thing is that, as we've said all along, the solution is in getting people...
about our testing facility over at Sunflower Clinic. I forwarded all those to Tom and to Tim, so they're aware of these. And I sincerely appreciate that you've got in the briefing today that we're looking for a larger facility as a result of some of the concerns that I had seen on our testing facility. I actually went over and toured it before I came to work Monday morning. And the folks over there are doing a great job. I want to make sure that I let you know and all those. I appreciate what they're doing. They're kind of operating with one hand tied behind the back though because we've got a table setting out 25 yards or so from the building, out in the sun or if it's raining, out in the rain, and the public gathers in the parking lot. It's not ideal. So I do appreciate that you're looking for a larger facility because I think that's important that we have that. The final thing is that, as we've said all along, the solution is in getting people vaccinated. I'm glad you briefed on how we're doing on vaccinations. But, and actually, we talked to Tim yesterday about, we need some kind of public awareness that I don't think is out there, that people, that the public trusts to get the word out. I don't think the public trusts government. I hate to say that as a person that's a leader in the government sector, but I don't know that they trust everything that the government is saying. As a result, we need to find the right people to get the message out. The solution for us to get past this is vaccination. So I think that we need to work with our communications folks and with our health department and figure out what the proper way forward to get the word out that the vaccine is safe. There've been over 5 billion vaccines worldwide that have been provided. You've seen that we've got 200 and some thousand that have been provided here in Sedgwick County. Every commissioner's been, has been vaccinated. I don't see us growing an extra head or anything up here. I haven't noticed anybody tracking me. So a lot of the things that I keep hearing about the thing not being safe or that the government is injecting tracking devices into your system are totally false. So I just think that we need some better way of getting PA out. So thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Couple of things. To Commissioner Lopez's point around schools and reporting percent of positives, they're reporting those, aren't they? I mean, they're already reporting that. So, I mean, they have to report their positives to us, and then don't we?
They're embedded in those numbers, yes.
Okay, so we could, we could, I mean, we already have the data, right?
We'll just have to pull it out.
Okay. So is there a way to, on our dashboard, to piecemeal that out when it, when it comes to like, say, a certain age and under? Because it's really kind of hard to read on here. I mean, you have to really toggle over the, I mean, you got zero to nine and then you have 10 to 17. Is there a way to kind of pull that out and then historically, you know, since schools started, could we do it by week? Or what would be the most appropriate way to put that on here so that we could see our pediatric cases?
We'll, we'll ask the data branch and the folks in IT to see if we can add another tab there. One of the issues that we had earlier, that the numbers were so small that we didn't want to inadvertently disclose individual identification.
Sure.
Now, unfortunately, the numbers are big enough that that's probably not a concern, so we can probably be a little more discreet in our reporting.
Okay, so what do you think a timeframe of getting that on our site would be?
I hope that we can get it on in the next two weeks.
The other question would be third doses. I've had some questions around those who are looking to receive their third dose. Are we doing that currently? What is our protocol?
Absolutely. We have done, I think, 641 third doses, and so people schedule that just as they would, or they're able to approach just like any other vaccine.
Okay. The Ambassador Program, I think that's a really great idea. How many people have you had sign up so far?
We have trained, I think we've trained about 20 folks already, and we've got more training scheduled. And so we'd like to get a lot more folks in the community trained.
Okay, I love that idea. There's a lot of data to collect, a lot of information. I appreciate you guys doing this on a, on a weekly base. I hope that we can get more people involved and maybe the Ambassador Program is a way for us to, to Commissioner Dennis's point, communicate in a way that those who don't necessarily want to get the vaccine maybe would change their mind. I think that's the whole reason why we're having this conversation each week now so that we could maybe, even if we just connect with one person to change their mind, that's, I think it's important for us to try to do that. So thank you for all this information. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Lopez?
Sorry, just a couple of quick things, just to kind of go back to what Lacey was saying. On the Ambassador Program, I love that too. I think that's fantastic. Are we sharing that? We are offering that on our social media? Can we push that out a little bit?
We are and we have, and we did do a press release yesterday as well. So we're ramping up communications on that.
Okay, perfect. And then with, when we look at the kids and we get that added, can we go back in time and, and show kind of, maybe like right before school started, a weekly progression to where we're at today so we can really see that difference and not just start today and then not really have that history?
Yeah, we'll have the data folks look at going back as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. Someone forwarded me two documents that are put out by the Sedgwick County Health Department. One of them is a six-page document, mostly a policy for K through 12 schools. Is that something that we are asking all of the schools in Sedgwick County to follow this guideline or this policy?
We're, we are offering, based on Senate Bill 40, and if Justin needs to come up here and clean up my language, he will, but we are offering recommendations and guidelines to school districts that, based on KDHE information and best practices.
So they can choose to follow this if they want to, but they don't have to?
Based on Senate Bill 40, that's correct.
And if they don't follow this, is there anything bad that happens to that school district? I mean, is there some negative consequence that they would have? Funding challenges or something would happen to them?
I'll let Justin speak. I mean, the negative consequence may be an increase in infections amongst kids.
I understand that part, right. But in terms of, in terms of.
I'll let Justin talk about it, kind of enforcement.
Government, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Howell, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. And familiar, I think, with the document you're referring to. I would say first off, I'm not an attorney for a school district. I'm not providing any legal advice to any school districts. Each of them have the right to have legal advice provided on their own. I think, as Tim mentioned, it is guidance consult, it's guidance the school district has from Dr. Menz and the Health Department as to best practices and measures to prevent the spread of COVID-19 within their schools. It's not mandated or ordered upon them. There is a question, and again, this is really for the school districts to interpret and apply it because it's a, there's a statute, KSA 65-122, that does, in the opinion of the county councilor's office, it imposes a duty on schools and parents to exclude people from schools who either have an infectious or contagious disease or are suspected of having an infectious or contagious disease. The ramifications of not following that best practice and guidance, I would say, would be up to the schools and their legal counsel in terms of any, you know, liability claims, funding, as you asked about those types of things. So I don't know the full scope of that as to how it might apply to a school. I certainly think, as Tim mentioned, from a public health standpoint, the intent behind those best practices is to keep there from being outbreaks in schools, to limit or reduce the spread of COVID-19 within a school. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, and that's a longstanding statute. For example, if someone had tuberculosis and they tested positive, there would be consequences. They would be able to quarantine or actually isolate that student.
That's correct. That statute's been around since 1905, its last amendment in the 70s.
But now, but now it's being applied potentially to close contacts, you know, suspected potential exposure to COVID in a school. And then there's a, if you will, a, an order from the Health Department to isolate or quarantine, isolation for a positive case and a quarantine requirement for someone who's potentially been, been exposed to COVID in the classroom. So that, they're, they're using the 65-122 to order a quarantine. Is that correct?
I don't think that's quite correct. I'll get into explaining this. It gets a little bit complicated, so I'll do my best and let me know if you have any follow-up questions. We're talking about KSA 65-122, which predates by about three decades, a bill that was passed in the mid 2000s in Kansas that allowed local health officers and the KDHE secretary to do isolation and quarantine orders specifically. KSA 65-122, where I talked about the duty for schools and parents to exclude people from schools who either are positive for an infectious contagious disease or are suspected for being positive, talks about them being excluded until the expiration of the prescribed period of isolation or quarantine for the particular infectious or contagious disease. I don't know exactly how every school's interpreting the guidance that the Health Department has given. It's possible that some of them and their legal counsel are reading that guidance as, and not just the guidance, I should say, from the county, but also the guidance from the KDHE and CDC, as the prescribed period of isolation or quarantine. In other words, the best practice is to follow to keep COVID-19 from spreading in their schools. I would imagine, I've heard different opinions from different attorneys around the state as, in terms of how that applies. And so I don't think there's a consensus or unanimous view as to how that statute works. But I would say that it's possible they view that. But I don't think it's just the county. I think what the county does is very similar to what KDHE has issued in guidance, which I think is actually quite a bit, and Tim can comment on this if I'm getting this wrong, but I think it's less restrictive than CDC. I think the CDC just says 14 days and then gives an option for local, less restrictive measures. I know that the guidance Dr. Menz and the Health Department, I believe also the KDHE has allowed for slightly less restrictive measures with daily testing and/or the, there not being any symptoms. So I think there's been a slight, and that was all the way back in February of 2021 when those revised standards were applied with kind of the high-risk and low-risk contact analysis.
Okay, so again, when you use the, when you say CDC or KDHE, I think it's pretty clear those are guidelines. But I communicated with our health director and asked this question, and it sounded to me like it was more of an order from the Health Department. It wasn't really a guideline, it was a directive. So I'm, I guess I would just say, if it's your viewpoint, this is guideline and not a directive, we need to clean that up because I think it's been interpreted as a directive of the health, of the health director, health director.
I mean, I can't speak for Adrian Byrne's viewpoint on that. I would say that I think schools, again, may be interpreting this as it's best for them to do this, but it's certainly not a legal order that's requiring them to do anything in order for that to occur. As, as Tim noted under Senate Bill 40, one of the things that would have to happen is Dr. Menz would have to propose an order and the Board of County Commissioners by a majority vote would have to adopt that. That has not occurred, but these guidelines or recommendations, they may see fit to follow.
Again, so just to wrap up that part of the comment here, it seems like we're using that 65-122 for potential infection because of exposure, potential exposure in a, you know, close contact situation in a classroom. And so we have, it sounds like we have the legal authority, if we wanted to, to issue a quarantine. In that case, we could do that under that statute.
Well, and Commissioner Howell, the part I forgot to mention when I analyzed KSA 65-122 before is both Dr. Menz and the KDHE secretary have separate statutory authority, again, passed in the mid 2000s, to issue isolation and quarantine orders to end specific individuals. I mean, not general orders, but actually specific to somebody who's either positive for COVID-19, which would be an isolation order, or somebody who may be a close contact, which would be a true quarantine order. And those are, you know, lawful orders where there's an opportunity for the party to challenge them in court on an individualized basis.
One of the things that's in here, it talks about your child was in a classroom where his, was a positive case was, was found, and they use the word classroom. It doesn't really reference the, the idea of, in fact, I'll have maybe a subsequent comment on this as well, but it doesn't really mention the idea of, you know, close contact being defined as six feet and 10 minutes or longer, six feet or less and 10 minutes or longer for, to be classified as a close contact. It just simply says, the child was in the classroom. And that is one of my concerns is, if there's a classroom that's a 25 students and someone gets tested positive, does that mean all 25 students then would be, would be considered a close contact in that situation?
And Commissioner Howell, again, my understanding, and I'm referring to a document that does define close contact in a way is the way you just mentioned. So I'm not sure specifically, maybe I'm a little mixed up on which document.
Well, it's the last page. It says, "Today, we were informed a student in your child's classroom tested positive. This student last attended a blank." And so I don't know who wrote this, but again, it references the idea of classroom. It doesn't really talk about close contact, the idea of six feet or less for 10 minutes or longer.
I, yeah. And I think I see what you're talking about, Commissioner Howell. I believe it's on both pages five and six of that document. My presumption on this, and Tim can correct me if I'm wrong, is they're trying to be very clear in terms of, it's both the, the low-risk contact notification letter, and again, this is an example that the school could use, or the higher-risk letter. I imagine there is, there's often an effort on the part of our Health Department, KDHE across the board, to not disclose the identity of somebody who does have COVID-19. So I imagine they're trying to be more general in scope in that letter.
I think that's my last legal question. I have maybe one more question for Tim here.
Okay, thank you.
So one question for you, sir, would be, I don't, I get this idea that the majority of the kids that are being pulled out of school are actually not test, they're not ones that have tested positive, but it's the quarantine part of this. I don't know what the ratio is. Let's say that, you know, three or four students for every positive case, maybe it's more, maybe it's 10 students for every positive case, is in a quarantine status because of a close contact situation. Can we, can we get that data? That would be really good to know. How many of the students that are, that are not in school are test positive versus close contact quarantine? And then those that are close contact quarantine, if we can, again, I know they're going through testing, it'd be good to note how many of them actually do test positive as a consequence of that close contact. So it's two things I'm asking here. One is, what's that, what's that breakdown of students that are out of school because of a positive case versus a suspected close contact situation? And if those are out of school because of close contact, how many of them ultimately test positive for being, you know, because they did, they did have close contact? How many of them are found later on to be positive when they do that, do that testing to get back in school? Does that make sense?
It does. I believe that we, and again, this is going to be data that the school districts report to us, and we have been meeting with them and we're getting that information. I think that we can come pretty close to the answer to your first question. I'll have to look at the data to see if we can capture that second question, but we'll look at that.
All right, thank you so much.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I guess I just want to be really careful as we're talking about our guidelines to the schools and KDH guidelines to the schools. Justin, can you speak maybe to the liability for schools if they disregard any type of these proactive measures for guidelines?
Again, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. Commissioner Lopez, that's a good question. Off the top of my head, I'm going to have a hard time telling you that just because that is a very in-depth question. I know I've answered your question in terms of the county. What I'll do maybe is do it in an hour, a comparison of what I said before. I think you raised the question, would the county be liable or potentially liable? And, you know, the initial kind of standard answer is, well, there can always be claims brought, but is their liability likely to stem from it? And it was our, is the county councilor's office's opinion that the answer is that the county would not likely be liable for not imposing a mask mandate, for example, because it's discretionary action of the Kansas Torque Claims Act. There's, there's certainly an ability to not be liable due to not exercising discretion or exercising discretion. In a similar context, it's very hard to say under KSA 65-122. It's a statute that has not been, not aware of any Kansas appellate courts that have analyzed what the duty is on schools. But the word duty is an important word in the statute. And so I, it's hard to say whether if, you know, something, an outbreak would occur, whether they're for sure going to be subject to claims and claims would be successful. I just, I don't know for sure. I believe schools are subject to the Kansas Torque Claims Act as well, so I mean, they have some of the same protections. And so it's really hard to say, and it's something that I, to be honest, I haven't analyzed fully in depth, just not being an attorney for a school district. So I think there's the possibility there. I know that some of the schools, I've heard of schools within Sedgwick County who said under the vice of legal counsel, they are following the guidelines that are given, whether by the county or the state, specifically for some of the reasons like Commissioner Howell was asking me about that I answered, because they're trying to probably avoid, it's probably a combination of trying to avoid outbreaks within their schools, but also probably trying to avoid the potential liability for that. But I can't say that I have a very good analysis on all the issues because there are other potential claims that could be brought outside of that statute I just mentioned.
I just think it's really important that we realize that our school boards and our superintendents, they're following our guidance because we're the Health Department, they're following KDHE guidance because, you know, they're the people who have the knowledge and the best way to try to mitigate this as, as much as possible. So I really want to be careful how we discuss them following those guidelines and make sure that it's known, that it's for the, you know, for the best for their students and for their staff. I mean, their staff and their nurses are getting so completely overwhelmed as it is that we just, we need to be just careful how we talk about that so we're not adding extra pressure to, to our schools, to our teachers, nurses, or even our superintendents and principals. So I just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, again, I just want to make sure.
Well, again, I just want to make sure it's clear that what the Health Department puts out is our guidelines, and it's up to their local board to determine which parts of those guidelines to follow. The guidance, as you read through it, is, it's very lengthy. The charts are kind of hard to follow, but right now, it's probably the best information that we've got available, but again, they are guidelines. It's not mandatory from Sedgwick County that the school board follows them. But my question honestly is on contact tracing. If there's a, someone comes up that is positive in a school, are we having the schools do the contact tracing, or is the Health Department doing that?
I'll let Tim answer that.
Because the schools often find out about a positive before the results flow back through KDHE to the Health Department, often they initiate that, but our Health Department works with the cases and then identifies folks, and then actual contact tracing is being handled right now by KDHE.
By KDHE, okay, good. But my worry again is that the schools have got enough to do without us tasking them to do contact tracing, so I didn't want to add one more requirement on to the schools. So, thank you.
If I could make one comment yet about the guidance versus orders, to make sure that Adrian does certainly understand the difference between Dr. Minz's ability to issue an isolation order or quarantine order for an individual and the guidance that we provide collectively to schools. There's a pretty discreet difference between the powers that Dr. Minz has as the health officer and then what the Health Department provides to schools in terms of guidance and recommendations in terms of keeping their students safe.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks for the presentation, Tim. Make a motion to receive and file. There's motion to receive and file the report. No other comments?
Did you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Being no other comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items H through L this morning.
Okay, there's a motion, I'll make a motion to accept consent items H through L. Any questions or comments about any of those? Being done, there's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Commissioners, do anybody, do any of you have anything to report on committees or boards you serve on? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. I just want to thank the public and everyone that joined us at Zooli on Saturday night. It was a little warm, but it was a great evening. We had a little breeze, so it was not totally uncomfortable whatsoever, but the public came out to support the zoo. It's the number one fundraising for the zoo each year, and I sincerely appreciate that. And I want to congratulate all of the volunteers and everyone at the zoo for having put on a fantastic Zooli. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I heard it was a great event. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. We, at the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition, our policy subcommittee, have been discussing ways to move along initiatives next year in the legislature. One of those being, we have asked for a 4% increase for services to be funded, because they have not been increased since 2008. And so the question arose around, what does 4% mean? Because I know when someone comes and asks us for 4%, I would like a more detailed way to understand exactly those amounts. So when you think of every single diagnosis charge, I guess that's not what it's called, but the code, the code that is rendered for services that allow for the payment of those services rendered, there are a lot of those. There are a lot of codes that get implemented for us to receive funds. So we need to strategize around a way for us to easily explain what exactly that 4% means. And so I have asked for a couple of those codes. So if one code, like, let's just say, an office visit, for example, and Tim, maybe you can explain this a little better, I know I'm putting on the spot, but you're really good at answering these questions, because you're a pro. If we had a code that we've only received, you know, I mean, what would be a code, or what would be a service that we have been rendering to our community that hasn't been increased since 2008? What would 4% of that be?
Well, one example could be a therapy session that we're reimbursed at $60, and so if we got 4% on that, it would be another $2.40 for that particular code. So that would be a help, and you multiply that times the number of the thousands of hours of therapy that we deliver, it makes a difference in what we're able to offer, maybe add more staff to provide more services.
Okay. So when we talk about policy discussions, when we talk about our legislative agenda for next year, is there a way to make it easier to understand as far as the dollar amount? That would be really beneficial in the gap in which, you know, it's been since 2008. We're rendering services. We are one of the only locations, if not the only location, who does provide services to those who don't have insurance. That is a huge deal. When you go walk down to Pica Street, you can see all those people who we do service in addition to other community members. So I'd really like to have a conversation before we get to bringing that legislative agenda to us, because that would be very beneficial. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the regional hospital discussion. Joan mentioned in our policy discussion around the change in thought process as far as a physical location for more regional mental beds. The conversation has now sort of morphed into what beds are available in our community at already established hospitals. So essentially, you know, paying for care that's already rendered, instead of building a physical location. But the challenge that I see is that we're not really increasing any capacity. We're just now paying for care that's already been rendered.
One of the alternatives is to identify hospital beds that may not be in use, and then converting those into regional or local behavioral health beds for state purposes. The hospital, like everything we've talked about, maybe not quite as complicated as what Justin talked about, but hospitalization for individuals experiencing mental health crisis is very complicated. There are different levels of hospitalization. The highest level of care is offered in a state hospital bed, and those state hospital beds now are primarily in Osawatomi and Larned. So what KADADs has determined as an approach to expand the availability of state hospital-level service beds is to contract with local hospitals to deliver that level of service, which isn't a normal level of service for local hospitals necessarily. So it may require a hospital to do some modifications to an existing facility. It's certainly much less expensive to modify beds in an existing hospital than it would be to create a new hospital facility. And so right now, KADADs is looking at identifying bed space that's in existing hospitals and converting those into state hospital beds. So it would actually increase the capacity for that level of care, provided there are regional hospitals that are able to do that.
Okay, I think if we could, and there's agreement from the commission, when are we going to talk about our legislative platform? When is the next time we're going to be bringing this up? I feel like it's right around the corner, and so I want to be prepared.
It is. Mike and I just had this discussion last week. Department heads are already beginning to look within departments regarding what they're going to, would like to bring forward for the commission to consider, and I think the commission should also start thinking about it. We're probably be bringing that back to a staff in early October to start the process, and we'd want to consult with Jason, but I think we want to finish product by early November. So you're right, it is right around the corner, and we need to start shaping it up.
You know, the whole time I've been on this commission, we've talked about a regional hospital. And so I think it's important that we all kind of understand the change in this, the thought process and how we're going to tackle this. So it would be nice to know, a physical location would encompass how many beds? What was the plan for a regional mental health hospital, and how many beds would that, and maybe that plan isn't fully developed. But what would that number be in comparison to our current hospital capacity that could be utilized for this service? So I'd like to know those two things.
We can dust off, the original plan from three years ago or so was for a defined number of beds. I know the sheriff was instrumental in helping create that as well. We can dust that off, bring that back to the commission, and then begin the comparative analysis on what these two models are presenting to us.
Okay. But the larger discussion before with the 4%, we have to figure out a way to help people understand this, because I've been trying to understand this for three years, and although I feel like I'm really getting there, it's a complicated, it's a complicated subject matter that even those who have been in it for a very long time, it's hard to understand. So to expect legislators to sort of just get it with a 4% number, I believe we're doing a disservice in really helping people understand exactly the dollar amount that we're asking for, even if it's a ridiculous number, which it probably will be. But I think we need to give them, we need to give them that number, and tell them, you know, how much unfunded care is being provided and how it's really taxing our all-service providers. You know, we do have, we do have the data to back up all those unfunded care amounts. So let's figure out an easy way to understand it. So when do you think that we could get that on the calendar to discuss? What would be an appropriate timeframe for you to bring back information to commissioners, whether it be 2-2-1s, whether it be a staff meeting? You know, could we get that on the calendar to discuss?
Commissioner, let me have finance and an intern work up the financial numbers of that, and hopefully get that back to the commission within a week to 10 days, either through 2-2-1s or we can bring it back to a staff meeting in public, either way.
Thank you. There's a lot of work going on with the Policy Committee Subcommittee of the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition. There's a ton of work that is being done weekly by some really talented and dedicated people. And so I just, I'm very thankful to be on this committee and this coalition, because the work we're doing is really important. Switching gears just real quick, thank you, Tim. In addition to Constitution Week, it is National Assisted Living Week. When I worked in senior living, those 13-plus years of working with seniors, this was one of my most favorite times of the year. I actually started during this week in assisted living residence, and the work that they do to engage seniors, especially during this time. There was a report that just came out that talked around 10 days of isolation results in almost three years, it takes you almost three years to recover from 10 days in isolation. And so when we think of our senior living, when we think of those living in senior living right now, and the isolation that they went through last year, and some still to this day, we have a lot of ground to cover. And so these initiatives, like National Assisted Living Week, or Adopt a Grandparent, or those kinds of initiatives, I think are really important to keep seniors engaged, because we know that social isolation is the number-one killer of older adults. And so if you have a grandparent, or a loved one, or a friend who's living in one of these residences, make sure to follow the guidelines that they have set for visitation, but reach out. It's very important that we engage with seniors in our community. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Is there any others? Committees? Commissioner Howell? No. Okay. I'll just, public service announcement that the District, or the Citizen Advisory Board for District One will be meeting next Monday at 5:30 at the Bel Air Community Center, at their Bel Air City Hall. Any others? I don't see any. We do not have a fire agenda. We do not have an executive session. We do have a fire agenda? No. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Just point of order, we're still on committee reports. I'm waiting for other to make some comments.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Other.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. For other, I just wanted to highlight an event that's happening in my district. Many people don't know that the Oklawn and Sunview communities are not part of Wichita. They're in the unincorporated part of Sedgwick County, and there's a lot of folks there that need help. And there's a number of churches that have come together to put together a community event that's going to happen this coming Saturday, and this is not just for Oklawn, but anybody in Wichita or Sedgwick County would like to participate is very welcome to attend. The event will be this Saturday. It's at 2937 East Oklawn Drive, and the event is from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. It's kind of a long event, but they have a number of speakers, they've got special music, they have activities, they have many services being provided, there is food being given away, there is going to be a county presence there. We have a Sheriff's Department, as well as the Fire District of Sedgwick County will also have a presence, and if EMS has ambulances available, they may also attend that as a, to have a public safety presence there. There'll be all kinds of activities. Again, this is not exactly like the Convoy of Hope, but I do consider this to be similar to that, in the fact that there's a lot of connection to the community and government services coming together, and ministry from churches as well. The event has been titled, "The Community Revival, Unity for the Community." This is the first event of its type in this community, and the number of things, again, be given away, there's all kinds of connections to county services. One thing I've asked for was bookie waste coupons. I think that's still, the plan is to have some bookie waste coupons available for the people that come to this event that need that help. And I know that in terms of activities, a number of elected officials will be in attendance, and I know they're going to have a dunk tank, so if you all want to come out and dunk me at 1:45 p.m., now's your chance.
Sign us up.
Yeah, sign you up. I get it. They'll be fighting for that chance to dunk Commissioner Howell. Maybe I'll get dunked more than once, I don't know. But that is coming, this coming Saturday. So I appreciate those that put this together. There was going to be a proclamation to highlight this, but there wasn't support for that. So I just want to make the comments today that I think this is a great opportunity for providing ministry and help to the community coming together. We're trying to do as many things as we can to help this community thrive and understand public safety and connect the services that they desperately need. So I'm glad that this is being done, and if you have any questions, you're welcome to contact me here at the county. I'd be glad to tell you all about it. We have a flyer we can show you. Please, if you are available on Saturday between 11:00 and 6:00 p.m., we would love to have you show up out there. I'll be out there for a number of hours, I assume, that day, certainly for my time to be dunked at 1:45, I plan to be there for sure. So with that, I just want to say thank you to those that put this together, and I would hope that the community does respond. They potentially will have thousands of people, and that's what we hope for. So this should be a big event. Again, I don't know how many churches are involved, maybe 20 churches involved in providing the ministries to this event. So thank you to those involved, and look forward to seeing how this goes. Thank you, Chairman.
Rachel Lopez?
Thank you. So starting today through October 15th is the National Hispanic Heritage Month. There will be numerous events over the next month to celebrate this, but there's a big one on Saturday called Latin Fest. It will be in the Old Town Plaza, and it starts at 11:00. There'll be food, music, it'll be just a big fun party. It's one of many events, like I said, to celebrate this, and I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that today is the start of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. There are a ton of events going on this weekend. I just wanted to highlight one as well. The Heartland Wichita Black Chamber of Commerce is having the Hall of Fame Awards Festival this Saturday from 5:00 to 10:00 at McAdams Park, and our very own former county commissioner, Melody McCray-Miller, is being honored as one of the honorees, along with Cleo Littleton and Edwin Sexton Sr. So that would be a great event with lots of music and festivities. So join us at McAdams Park from 5:00 to 10:00 this Saturday, September 18th.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Two quick events this weekend out of Jabara is the Experimental Aircraft Two quick events this weekend at the Jabara is the Experimental Aircraft Association Fly-In. So if you like airplanes, come out and take a look at Jabara. I think it opens at 8:00 o'clock in the morning that day. And the other thing is that, just mark your calendars ahead, on Saturday, November 6th, is the annual Veterans Day Parade. It'll start right out here in front of our offices. Also, we've talked to Commissioner Howell into being a judge that day, so he will be judging the parade. So I am certain that JROTC will probably get an award, and we'll see if we can get some folks from Sedgwick County there. He can help us win an award there. So make sure you mark that. It starts promptly at 11:00 in the morning. Thank you.
Okay. Quite a number of announcements under the other. So, next item, executive session. We do not have one. There is not a fire District Number One meeting. So with that, no other comments. Thank you for tuning in. We will adjourn and see you next week.